Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We need to order at 6:00 on August 1st, 12:22 at the town hall upstairs. A motion to adopt the agenda? Do we have a second? Do we have any changes on that?
I didn't hear, please.
She was up there.
Yeah, can get to the agenda, the executive session.
We'll put that in.
I didn't hear that at all.
Exactly the session, we want to add executive session between 9:00, between 10:00 and 11:00 for personnel matters.
So as per usual, personnel is not an adequate reason to go into the regular session. They, however, it is possible to go into executive session for the purpose of employing a higher than employee. So Wendy, for the record, that's section, BSA Title 1, Section 313, subsection 1, 3. It is the best practice to quote the statute under which we are going up to executive session.
What do you say?
So we have a, if we have a motion, a second. Adding that to the agenda? So they're all in favor? Opposed? We have the minutes of... This was the last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
So Wendy, the same signing needs to take place for the executive session that we went into on July 18th, please.
And do you have the times, did you see where I highlighted the times that were missing? And we had it thrown in this, it's the whole last page, I think?
So what are we doing, what are we adding to the minutes?
We're only adding the citation that applied to the current agenda because it's for the same thing. I'll just read it for the minutes. "The employment of an employee provided with public authority shall make final decisions to hire in an open meeting and shall explain the reasons for his final decision during" the section we're invoking for the executive session. And we did so on January 8th, on January, right, July 18th.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
There's no timestamps in there.
I don't know.
Okay, then I'll leave them out, that's fine.
I don't know, fine, I don't remember. Are there any other additions or corrections?
I just want to thank Wendy for these excellent minutes. There are a lot of moving parts in that meeting.
We don't have a motion, I thought, so why don't we make a motion to accept the minutes?
So, second.
There's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will report.
Now we have an executive meeting.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so we have the minutes of July 18th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, on page 1, the last line before the bullet parts, delete the word rambling.
Delete the word what?
Rambling.
Little does I know about taking minutes, which is very little, I don't think it's supposed to be editorialized, I taught that to him. It was about me, I did find it offensive, but minutes aren't supposed to be editorialized.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes on July 18th? I'm sorry, anything? If there, someone that can look to accept the minutes, ask Amadi?
Amadi.
Do we have seven? Oh, okay, you got that one? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will report. FEMA, do we have any updates on FEMA or no? Is that just, I know Bill puts it there every week, but...
I haven't heard anything, I checked my emails and I'm on the chain.
The only thing I know, Joe, is that the planning project will be started next week, which is the final project of FEMA.
Oh, okay.
Which is the length of the bridge.
Mike, do you have anything?
No, we're pretty much just continuing with mowing and grading and hauling some sand in. I did put a call into our salt suppliers to try to get a price, and at this point, nobody has a price, so waiting here back and wait to find something else.
I got one quick thing, I was asked the other day, somebody, Tom, what the status of the bridge, I want to see to have a answer for more, give me one.
I don't know.
Which one did you have stated?
Do you mind knowing about status of the bridge?
Yes, I'll tell you the status of the bridge. All the railways have been signed and the texts have been cut right now. At the end of August, the town will have a chance to review the plans and ask questions. And it will go out to bid 11/9/22 for work to be done in 2023.
It's definitely gonna happen next year.
This is not a snag in the bid.
Did you hear, do that on... Remember, you said?
That being, and they're gonna do the end of August, right, they're gonna have a meeting?
Well, I didn't mention a meeting to her, she mentioned, so I asked her about when the plans would be done, and that's when she told me they would be done, and they would be sent to us, so I thought we'd wait and we'd get them sent to us, then we could go from then and then the meeting, but I think that was in the plans, okay?
I think, I think it'd be good idea to have a meeting once you've got the final, the final design, I agree.
Can I take questions?
Sure.
Our share, town share seems to be a little bit vague, but it's going up all the time as the cost of the project is going up. It looks, at least from an outside point of view, that we're gonna have to pass a bond issue in order to pay our share of multi-million dollar bridge. What happens if the people at the town say no?
Well, you don't, you don't have to have it, without, they don't need a bond, I don't think, they can do a lot to get financing.
We can, we can research, Paul.
Yes.
But one way or another, we're going to have to finance, whether it be a bond or...
Yeah, that's obvious, yeah, somewhere. So, if, does the, does the voting populace get a vote when we go to a bank, for instance, to get funding?
No, I don't believe so.
It better go that way then.
And it's my, it's my understanding, if, for whatever reason, the town says not to go forward with the project, then we're obligated to pay the cost up to that time. Then, then the bridge becomes ours. So if, if the next week, or the next month, or the next year, there's a flood and something happens to that bridge, then the town has to pay 100% of the cost of replacement.
We're told we've gotten rid of a lot of money.
Pretty good, I guess.
We can't get through?
So, okay, anything else for Mike or anything on the highlight?
Do you guys see the hydro seed, like, in front of your house? You see the weeds that are...
They're bad, I think, right there. We don't know what happened there, honestly.
No, no, are you gonna cut the weeds down because that's...
In front of my house?
Well, no, that's all weeds.
But they grow pretty fast, we'd have to do a weekly.
They're taller than, they're like...
Well, in front of one place, they are, because they don't all long, but...
Can I ask a question, what is the difference between when do you send the hydro seed and when do you just like... Do you always hydro seed when you do a project?
We kind of have when.
But that, that's the way you go, no more throwing the seeds and putting the mulch on, it's always hydro seeding then?
Pretty much.
Okay.
So we don't use the hay mulch anymore because it's hard to come on, it's expensive.
Just one question.
Okay, there's no more. Ken, do you have anything?
No, I don't, yeah, actually, just reminder that August 15th is first tax payment due we're rolling in, and also a reminder that the primaries are being held next Tuesday upstairs here, voting is from 9:00 to 7:00, and I'm hoping to see, other than, I think Rich and Suzanne already said, we will not be here for counting at 7:00 sharp.
How will we do?
When's that?
Next Tuesday night, 7:00. You won't make it.
I will.
Okay. Kathy, you will be? That's all I've got.
Hi, committee. You guys want to defer to executive sessions or something you want to speak?
No, we can wait till executive session, okay?
I have a question that I don't think belongs in the executive session, I just wondered, for the minutes of the July 18th meeting, there's a reference to Bill, you'll edit the advertisement for the position and run it three times in August, in the shopper and the Ramon Journal, I just wondered what the results of the, of that additional advertising were.
The advertisement did not go forward.
Aye.
I'm blocking it, so I think it's a little window. It was supposed to.
We are overdoing that. I think we need an explanation of why it didn't go forward if the select board acted on it and it's in the minutes.
Like I said, I don't have a good explanation for you, alls I know is it wasn't, it was not advertised, and people thought, it wasn't... It wasn't my choice to pull the plug on it, it just didn't happen.
Oh, I don't understand, Rich. This was agreed upon by the select. It is reflected in the minutes of the select.
Aye, Rich.
Someone is accountable for not carrying through the direction of the select board. This is a matter of good governance. I would really like to understand how this happened. Is someone here familiar with how this happened?
No.
Do think probably the ad is going to run in August, it'll be for the three weeks in August, beginning Friday.
Yeah, it is gonna run, you know that.
It is gonna run, and it will take us to the last days of August.
You're right, you're absolutely right. It was the wishes of the select board to run it, whatever day we met, it was the wishes of the select board to run it Friday of that week, I believe, so we go in the following Wednesday.
Yes.
And that did not happen for various reasons.
That's just not acceptable.
Listen, I don't know how to answer the question, when nobody knows here, do...
Well... The decision was made that there was a better way to do it.
Who had the authority to make that decision and overturn a select board decision? Not follow through and...
There's five of us. There's five of us, they weren't made.
I remember distinctly, maybe I'm, I remember distinctly the discussion was that we would place the ad on Friday, it would run upon Wednesday, and it would, Kim actually made the point in our discussion about how long it was run, et cetera, et cetera. It was the clear direction on the select board for this to occur. I don't think we should be in the business of overturning select board decisions.
Honestly, Suzanne, I couldn't agree with you more, at this time, we did get lucky though, because I think it's gonna work out fine, but that's not the point, it's a principle of the thing.
Are you having a sidebar discussion?
No, I'm pointing to the minutes.
Oh, okay, it's on page, it's on page... Right, Wendy, it's the last page, the last page, page four, it says, current will edit the advertisement for the position and run it three times in August.
Okay, so three times in August, so we were running three times in August, so...
It wasn't despairing of what we had, Suzanne is 100% accurate, it wasn't despairing of what the select board wanted moving forward. That being said, I think, grab your dead horse enough and let's try to do better the next time, I think this, I think it's come to light.
But we are the elected legislative and executive body of this town. When we vote to take an action, that action is not subject to anyone turning that decision around.
Yeah, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen in August, so I don't understand what, it didn't go the first week, but it's, it's gonna be in August, so, I mean...
Despairing of the conversation, Suzanne is 100% right, and that's all I'm saying.
Whether we had actually received any further applicants, because that was the intent of the select board, to receive applicants in the interim while they're in the hiring process. So I think this is an egregious, and I want this settled out in the record, I think this is an egregious failure with no stepping up and taking it up. So end of discussion, we need to move on and not belabor.
Committee reports, the semi period. We have not got a confirmation from Mr. Dow. Yes, he said he just, his wife is gonna do, but we have not got a confirmation, so we'll have to continue to work on that. And once we get his confirmation, then there is a possibility that his neighbor would also be going to, I don't know if it's donate or, or sell some additional land, so we will follow that up. And as soon as we get confirmation of the additional land, if that is the case, then we will put out the bid, the logging or clearing of the land along with the fencing and all the necessary things that will be realized to send it up. So that's where that stands. Both the president, we've come through, and he will give us a definite, then we'll have to get the survey from DeBernardo and all those wonderful things that have to take place, so, so it's in the works.
So Joe, did you say, I'm sorry, unfortunately, that previous discussion, would you say that Mr. Dow has responded to?
No, he hasn't responded. We've dealt with him, he said he was gonna talk to his wife, but he's not, John stopped over, he's not given us any definite answers, so maybe he's away or something, so we'll, we'll have to, I'll follow that up with him.
Thank you.
The highway committee?
The traffic ordinance, I don't know, bridges, I've looked at it, there's a few things I think we better decide what we want to do, so I would suggest with that feeling that we might as well scroll back and see how we know that.
Okay.
We have to talk...
I didn't see, no, that was from two minutes ago, right? Yeah, okay, yes, so I...
Is there, is there a draft of the ordinance, I didn't see it in my email.
These are, these are not, no more, it takes the ones that did that for a couple weeks, Joe, a couple weeks ago.
Oh, yeah, I think, John, if I could just grab one, you have to.
Let the intersection down, continue it forward. Decide to keep it like it is, and that's gonna be changed, all the side roads, we like the bell coming out and the open bell, you want to stop sign in there, and you'd be back drive, or why don't you go? It's not that.
Thinking about that, that's an, a lot of people don't, they yield, but they don't know where they're yielding. Like, you hear a lot when you know, just yield for the other people to come off the bridge, if they're going left or right, and then you build a bridge. A lot of people don't know that, they're on the bridge, they wait for the other person on 21 to make sure that...
Things are getting aside, no, that's...
We're just a little, like, a public forum type thing, is that what you're thinking? I thought that's what you were saying last time, like, a public forum type thing, where the signs are going, didn't you mention that last time?
No, I said, I think Bill mentioned that after you come up with the, with the regulations of where the stop signs are gonna be and not be, or whatever, and when it's speed limits, then you should have a, have a formal meeting at all of these residents, because somebody might not want to have a stop sign there. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying you should listen, but I think you need to give them the opportunity to speak out, right?
So Joe, to that point, for the next meeting, could we actually publish with the agenda and the minutes of topics of those traffic ordinancees so that people will have a chance to look at them?
Well, if you don't want to publish these, they're, these are the old ones.
They're the old ones, I know.
Yeah, you don't want to publish the old.
So what amendments are being recommended, and do we have documentation of those?
There's none being recommended in the next, except for my recommendation, so I'll look for rest of the board recommendations, so I think the five of those should get together and go, which will then come all in one recommendation, you can change.
Okay, so once we get the recommendations, Joe's...
Yes, then, then it becomes, but these are the old ones, and no sense...
Yeah, two, two, yeah, they used to have, that's also like, no, that's all figured.
The parks committee, anybody know about, about the grant?
The last, I checked, Joe, we had not received word about the grant, but I do want to mention that on the August 15th agenda, I would like to suggest that we put the item about the driveway and the porta potty pad, as you know, GIA has been very generous in donating a porta potty for the village park, and we, did I mistake that?
Well, paying for it.
Paying.
You're not, you're going home, like I did here.
Got it, correct me, they're paying, GIA is urgently paying for the porta potty, and we need a pad for it to go on, and I, I think that we should just have an agenda item of...
Okay, I will do that, too, then. Personnel?
I have nothing, still have to meet with...
We have the building committee's report, but I would like to, I, I did mention all the select board over the weekend, I would like to make a motion that we add back the closet for $1,650, which we have the funds, and I think by having the closet, it will make the town look better, rather than Tim going out and buying some metal cabinets to put there, because we have the money, it's not, it's not even a stretch, so I'd like to make a motion that we add to the contract, assuming that you approve the contract, the closet for $1,650. Do they have a second for that one?
I'll second that, yeah.
Joe, would you say that the funding is completely available? Could you explain how you come to that conclusion?
Well...
What are the numbers?
I don't have the numbers, because I don't have it with me, but Ken, you have them, you have, we have flying, we have 11,000 and...
Right, if, if we were to count the 10,000 less in the reserve and the Witten Foundation from several years ago, and we count the capital budget of 11,200, that right there will more than cover 1,650. The estimate that we had worked on today, 126,754 from all seasons, and that's about the bathroom and the closet, and then we added in what could be an estimated for James, and James Countryside, the 200 amp from Lower, and Willston Florence and Lower, the floor outlet, the exit signs, the conduit, and then the remainder of the 20,000 we owe the engineer, and the 36,000 we've already spent, that would bring us 198,000. If we add in the bathroom, we'll be at 200,046.84.
You mean add in the closet?
If we add it in the closet, we'll be at 200,046.84, and we have available from our the funds, wait, 200, 201,000 is my sheet, so we'll be just sweeping values and just our, our the funds, but yes, the 11,200 is there, the 10,000 from the Witten Foundation, and the possible 10,000 that could be...
And so, wouldn't, and I know there was a quick discussion about completing the capital budget and spending all the money, I don't think you wouldn't be doing any of that, so the funds could still be there, and I think in, in, in the, in the scheme of things, we're gonna have a nice town hall, which will all be fixed up and everything else, and to have some metal cabinets sitting out there in the lobby when they can be occupied, I think, for 1,650 dollars, it's a bargain.
I think we, Kathy and I have discussed this, and actually, our recommendation was also to take off the closet. Honestly, we're, I would say falling on that, but compromising on that, if you will. That pretty much completes everything that we have in the offer funds, like you say, and we were going through quite the list of still things that need to be done, and we're still in the process of trying to prioritize things, and we did quite a little list, and so that's why we would really recommend to spend on the offer funds, as we are doing, and really not touch too much else right now, and see how this all shakes out, because there's still two or three things out there that we don't know exactly what the figures will be. All of these things that Kim just said, she's correct, Bill seems to think a couple of them may come under budget, it's almost a miracle these days, if anything comes under budget, so we may pick up a little more, and the only other thing, we don't know what the digit will be, and we're pretty much even.
But with the closet, you still, still, we're...
Just a little even, yeah.
...offer funds, and that leaves you the, the 10, the 10, and the 11, so we still have plenty of money, which to...
For the projects you're facing, you don't have plenty of money, I mean, it's, it's, do I think that it would be as far as...
What's that?
Do we need to get in the weeds as far as, like, the Witten Foundation money, how we can appropriate it, or?
The Witten Foundation will 10,000 is, has to do something.
With the ADA.
With the ADA.
Yeah, okay.
The 10 that we've already had in our possession, the other 10 is assuming we're gonna get it, it's, it's not promised, it's, it's...
It was a immediate.
So Kathy and I really didn't even take too much consideration into the additional money, but if it does come in, we think that we could apply that to some of the ADA stuff, then back out some of that escher money.
Well, the 10,000, the 10,000 dollars that you had in reserve from the Witten Foundation needs to go for the yellow.
And we're saying that even if we give additional money, that should go on some of the ADA pressures also, then we can take out some of the other escher money, is it?
Escher.
That's what it's gonna be.
There's so, so many acronyms, it's ridiculous, I mean, there's a list here that I have of things that need to be done that really should be priority.
What, and what's the total?
We're just making up a list at this point.
Kim just gave me the total.
Oh, no, no, this is...
Yeah, well, we don't know, but, but keep in mind... keep in mind that the capital budget and the money that's in the budget to the town hall is supposed to go for repairs and maintenance of the town hall. That's why it's in there.
But the list that we, the list is a five way to list that was started and hasn't.
Right.
It is.
Completed, but will exceed whatever budget we're in down on capital. Capital had stopped for a few years. Once we completed the restoration project and the installation and then stopped funding it.
Right. Because they got the offer money.
No, no, even before that, we had stopped funding it because we had completed the installation. So the 11 has been sitting there on hold. But with some of the projects that are coming up to keep them active, you might, a recommendation might be to the committee to discuss putting money again into the town hall restoration and start building it again if you hear the list that Rich knows.
It is pretty significant. I was actually talking with a cop in very small that fixed up our deck out there. He pulled it apart the best he could, tried to go underneath and see what was wrong with it. There's two by fours down there. They're not rotted, but he said they're he headed in that direction quick. All of the hanging were all rotten out from the screws. They just kind of hanging. He pieced everything together the best he could. And he said, it might be good for another year or two. So that is a project. It's probably going to be a priority. And we still have the cement out there that's chipping away and someone did trip and fall on it. So I don't know. I mean, that should probably be the priority in a lot of these things.
All right. Do we have a motion for to add back to the 126,000? Well, whatever the, whatever the contract is. Yeah. It's 126,754 plus 1650, correct?
Right, 1650. And if you just restate and when we add that 1650 back in, what would be the total amount expected to spend on the, on the town hall restoration?
So the total for all seasons contract only, adding the 1,654 deposit would be 129,404. And that contract was dated for August the 2nd. And that's what we'll go through, go in and submit that to them so they can order the actual mechanism for the work.
And then you also are going to figure, I think slightly more than the expected amount from ARPA for the total cost, including the expenses that we've already.
I'm estimating, and like I said, this is an estimation from, we don't even know what Jamie's is. And everything's coming out. The fingers are rounded. I'm coming up with 200,046 dollars and maybe process for the project without Jamie's digging for the 200 amp. And coming in from ARPA funds is 201,000.
I really think that's what Kathy and I really get stuck in point, sticking point with, which there was quite a few of the items that we were estimating. And until everything all shakes down, I mean, we thought this was a more conservative approach. But we think it's a physically responsible approach to it.
The other thing is, once they get into this project, if there's some surprises, that's going to elevate the cost. So you better have some kind of a buffer there then. And see what this, this Rich said, and shakes, shakes out, then find the positive. So what is your final recommendation then? Not final, I don't mean to put it that way. What is your recommendation for our top and proceed?
That we back out the bathroom cost. Kathy and I are fine. This is a lightened comment. We are fine with the closet. And that's our recommendation to accept the contract for all seasons with the bathroom ban though.
And we did talk about down the road, if there's money left without the surprises, we could get a local person to update that bathroom. It's balance line, the cost that they want 16 plus, there's a lot of money for that little bathroom only to make it bigger for a wheelchair, so I think we could have a lot of savings there.
That one.
So if that's your, if that's the regulation of the committee, the motion on the floor is to we add back the closet. So let's take a vote on that and then we have to approve all seasons closet. Okay? So there's no other discussion. All in favor of adding back the closet?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Everybody, was it unanimous or not?
Yeah, I, I, I'm hoping for the possibility that he represented it.
Okay, so that takes the clock. Now we need a motion to accept the all seasons contract, which is what, 128,404?
404.
404. Everybody want to make that motion?
I'll second.
I don't think we need to do them especially unless you want to. So all in favor of approving the all seasons contract, which is included, which adds back the closet for 1,200, 128,404?
You want to, you want to add, I'm starting looking at each other. Do you want to add in to make sure the offer is someone to execute the contract or Bill recommended?
Yeah, we have to execute the contract and then authorize, I guess, since Bill's not here, I guess I'll authorize myself to sign the contract. Right. So if that motion is okay, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Then, then Ken, well, it has to happen. Somebody's got to touch that all season and they have to send the amended second page.
I'll have this downstairs. Will you listen?
Yeah, okay, great.
Before we get off this, I want the chair like to, to build a committee to see as far as recommendations, as far as some of the who said that are energy company up there. How about the next few years?
Well, you have, you have, you're on the agenda every week. So why don't you, you know, we decide what you want to bring up and we can talk about that as, as we go. I would.
I agree with Joe. I think it would be very helpful to see a list of the projects that you have identified, even if you don't have a cost figure associated with them and the priority that you and Kathy think it ought to be again. And the higher the priority, the more we need that quarter to estimate.
And then my recommendation, I would sit down at some point, because we're coming to budget time soon, with Horney. So that if some of these items, I don't know what the cost or what they want to be, we should start adding to the capital budget.
Sure enough.
We haven't done that in three years. Maybe we need to start doing that, whatever that place is.
Yeah. Also, I just like to bring up the point about what is our guidance in terms of the use of the ARPA funds? To my understanding, we've always said that the 202,000 dollars approximately we're going to receive from are dedicated to the restoration of the town. And that we wouldn't spend any more than that on the restoration of the town hall. All the other expenses are going to be associated with the capital budget, the town, the town budget. And what I'd like us not to do is think that the town budget and the capital budget are available to us to spend on the restoration. I think we should say, I don't know exactly how to do this. I would yield to Rich and Kathy for your advice about how to, should we set a cap of the ARPA funding as the amount we're going to spend on town hall restoration? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that is Kathy and I's recommendation that we wanted to stay within that. So I, I do think we're there, if that's what you're saying.
So I'd be willing to make a motion that says something like, to the extent possible, the intent of the select board is to stay within the amount of ARPA funding, mainly 201,785 dollars. For the expenses associated with the restoration of the town hall.
No, you can't, you can't do that because you have 10,000 in the way.
Restoration or do you mean a handicap accessibility? I think we said that ARPA was just for the handicap accessibility. It's a restoration of the whole building.
Oh, perfect.
And we, and the money that is in the capital budget and the money that is, is put into the yearly budget is for the maintenance and restoration of the town hall.
Right.
And you will have, if, if the numbers are right and you're on, and the amount of 200,000, you'll still have 10,000 dollars over on the offer funds if you haven't spent. Because you need, you must use the 10,000 dollars for the foundation. You will still have, have this in the net, right? And I think it would be foolhardy to, to, to make a motion to, to strangle the hands of the committee or the board on the, on the restoration of the town hall because we're talking about two different things. Talking about handicap, then we're talking about fixing. And we've been doing that over the last, what, five years, four years now? I mean, we made windows, we made air conditioning.
It's a vicious thing. And we had to fill by the air guidelines and we got a lot of money through the roof and the windows. The biggest thing on that list, I think, is the ramp, I mean the capacity of covered walkway out on.
Finally, right.
The fire escape.
Actually, it's both. Bill said this afternoon, I talked to him at 4:15, it's not only this one. It's the one going out, the other often needing to be undercover.
Do we have an estimate on that, Kim?
No.
I, I, I think that we're going to characterize things as foolhardy. I think that it's also foolhardy to think about exhausting all of the other funds we have as we think about this project. Two things that will come up, Kathy's point, there will be things that come up, we don't know. And I understand that the motion to set the cap is maybe not the best way to do it. That's why I asked about that question. But I do think we should be clear about our intent is not to spend all of the money, including the 11,239 for capital and the perhaps gift of the Winton Foundation on the handicap access.
But that's actually how Kathy and I thought of it also, would be total. I mean, we didn't want to, we didn't want to complete that capital. We would call it be a capital reserve for an emergency. Just for that reason, in case we back to the gate of emergency. So I think we're all of the.
I think, I think, I think we're losing sight. There are actually two projects going on here. One is the handicap accessibility. And the other is upgrading the power. So updating the power is not, is, is, is aiming the total cost. But you're really doing two projects. It's not the end, updating the power has nothing to do with the handicap facility upgrade.
You don't need just the power to power the elevator?
Well, we're, we're, we are, with the air conditioning, we are done at the maximum of average. And we have an antiquated 100 amp service.
So what I'm saying is you're doing it for the elevator?
No. Well, yeah.
I think the elevator kind of just pushed us to the point we have to. It's been a a suggestion for quite a few years. And now between the pumps and the elevator, some of the engineers, 200 amp to do it.
That's an excellent point.
Mostly all residential is 200 against now. So this will go back for sure.
We also remember, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Kim, that when the auditor spoke to us about the use of the ARPA, a lot of the original, this is what we're going to do with the money and you're going to be audited on that, is now gone.
The restrictions were lifted in the, in the second phase and you can pretty much use it for whatever you like. And us being such a small town, it'll be okay. And that's where we could definitely take 10,000 that is in the reserve from the Winton Foundation, add that to it, and that will leave us 10,000 entered for the ARPA account to do whatever restoration.
But to the point made that we're doing two projects with this, we are.
We are.
But we're, we're all right. It's okay for us to do that because the restrictions happen. Whether it's the, yes.
Okay, can we move on?
When you had your motion?
Oh, yeah, that's better. All, all in favor of the motion to accept the contract for 128,404? Say aye? Close?
I think it's for Rich and Kathy.
Yeah, but I, I think your job now, you need to be figuring out the next phases that were not being covered under the offer money, but be covered by capital budget or other or the town, you know, for the town hall. That's something, and you can bring that list to us and you'll go from there.
Begin. All right.
All right. Way to committee, nothing except our friend there from the state, Lynn, I forget her last name all the time.
Yeah, Clyde, what?
What's her other name? What has, you know, that name, so then. Who one who does that?
Your introduction, water.
I know, but you remember the name, Lynette?
What, what, Dell?
Yeah. She's no longer going to be involved in our project. She's been pulled off to do a major, something else. So we are going to have a new person who's going to be assisting us with the grant. So I can.
And 30%, we literally say 30% of the information that you have, but there's something going on.
Whatever. So anyways, so we're using Lynette of the state.
State.
Yeah.
Is that the one that gave some information basically on the floor?
No, no, that's, that's, that's mine. No, this is, this is the, this is the bump on. Other business? Other comment? Okay. The next regular meeting will be on Monday, August 15th at 16:00 AM here. Please the motion to go into executive session. Second? All in favor, just say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.